Order, start with the pledge of allegiance.
Recording in progress.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all. All right, welcome everybody. Have exciting meeting followed by budget meeting. We'll start things with public comment. Is there anyone out there who would like to make a comment? Not seeing anyone who might, but maybe. All right, I guess that's a no. Do we have any additions to the agenda this evening?
We do not.
Excellent, on to routine business items. Approval of minutes, I'm looking for a motion, please, to approve the January thirteenth, twenty twenty-two Board of Education Business Meeting Minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the January meeting minutes.
I can second that.
Thank you, Chris, is there anyone who has any questions, comments, or edits about these minutes? Sounds like no, all is in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 I think that's everyone, but anyone opposed or abstaining? That passes, hunt to Board of Education Committee reports, finance.
Okay, everyone, the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two budget is forty-seven percent expended compared with last year at this time where it was forty-nine percent expended and as reminder, special education is never changing landscape and now I'll turn over the rest of the meeting to Superintendent Hector.
Thank you, if we could put up the financial report, Mr. Muselli, please.
Yes, just give me a minute, I'm gathering folks from the other meeting and bringing them over, so I'm multitasking, I'm sorry.
All right, thank you, appreciate it. Okay, so we have a number of transfers, many of which are reclassifications. So the first one is, we talked about the bottle filling station that needed to be replaced and we needed a little bit more money to take care of that. We had some professional development that needed to happen at the high school, so we took care of that with a reclassification. We had some additional transportation costs and athletics primarily driven by our indoor track and what we anticipate to need for outdoor track as well. We had a number of athletes who did very well in indoor track, which is awesome considering we don't have an indoor track and we need to be able to transport them to invitationals and state meets. Then we had, we needed some additional art supplies, so we had a reclassification there. Additional science supplies, some reclassifications for that. We purchased teacher Chromebook covers for the new Chromebooks that were purchased for the teachers just to keep them protected, so we had a reclass there. We needed additional supplies in English Language Arts at BCS and additional PE as well as math supplies at BCS. And we also purchased a Barry saxophone at Bolton Center School as well as a reclass and a transfer from BCS to BHS to cover the shortfall to replace the sixteen desktops for the tech ed lab at the high school. And then we've got some projected shortfalls, as I shared with you last month, with regards to operational costs. This is just monies that you approved for transfer last month, it's just, we show it this month. And then as well as the eight thousand dollar transfer that the board approved last month for the East Con Services for Technology. And then to fund the shortfall for the purchase of the new American History Text that the board approved that they're going to be using now, so we transferred monies for that. We needed some purchase for some music supplies as well, as well as PE supplies and science supplies again. And then we needed to reclass to pay for the BCS elevator renewal. And I want to thank Miss Safran for a great idea about coming up with creating kindergarten yard signs to let everybody know that kindergarten registration across town is happening. So that concludes the transfer portion. And that, are there any questions on the transfers before I move on? Okay.
Sorry, Chris, I'm sorry. Question.
Yep, sorry.
So i- in the Q and A that you provided for the budget, there's a number of places where you indicate that supplies for next year were bought this year. Are some of these transfers related to that activity?
Um, a few of them, maybe, we were also able to buy some supplies with choice monies that we have also. So a little, and some of the supplies that were asked for next year, we needed this year, but people were trying to be extremely frugal, but they shouldn't be going without. So I took them out of next year's budget and purchased enough this year so that we have enough for them to use for this year as well as for next year. So that's part of the Q and A that I asked when, you know, going through the budget with the administrators, like as I see certain things, I'll say, is this something that they need in their classrooms right now?
Okay, thank you.
Great question, thanks. Anybody else? Okay, hearing none, at this point, we are currently projecting to be fully expended in regular education. The same in, in student support services as well as administration support and central services. We do have savings that we have been able to actualize in salaries and wages and personnel benefits. The savings are from new hires, projected retirements that have come in less than budget. So we had some people that had told us that they were going to retire, so we had planned for their retirement payout and they've now indicated that they are not retiring. We have some savings for ESY from the summer as well as our current unfilled positions. So we've actualized some of those savings there and as we are, we are forty-seven percent expended. So we will need a motion on those transfers, please.
I'd like to make a motion to approve those transfers.
Thank you, Ben.
I can second that, this is Chris.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Bennett, Chris, does anyone have any further questions or comments about the transfers that were just presented? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 No one opposed or abstaining? Okay, that passes on to personnel, the Personnel Committee met last week to discuss the terms of employment for unaffiliated employees, which we'll be discussing later this evening in executive session. That's all. On to community meeting reports, does anyone have any community meetings to report on?
I do, I've, just the Bolton Scholarship Fund, I attended the February meeting and I'm happy to announce that the thanks to some work Mr. Jan Santi and with Mr. Muselli and Mrs. Bradley, they figured out a way for us to have our phone-a-thon, which we weren't able to do last year because of COVID, but we'll be able to get it back up and running this year at the high school, which will be a change of pace. So thank you to the folks who were involved in making that happen. And then also the application for this year's scholarships will be available to current high school seniors and current college and graduate students this early in March, hopefully March first.
Thank you very much, Chris, is there anyone else? Like, believe it all. Okay, I will now turn things over to the Superintendent for the Superintendent's report.
Thank you very much, so as I'm sure everyone is aware, Governor Lamont announced his decision to endorse a plan recommended by the Commissioners of Public Health and State Department of Ed to eliminate statewide mask mandate in schools effective Monday, February twenty-eighth. Although times, at all times throughout the pandemic, the Bolton Public Schools followed health experts' advice from DPH and Eastern Highlands Health District related to our mitigation measures. We also followed the law. By doing so, we prioritized the health and safety of all members of our school district community and successfully mitigated against the spread of illness in our schools while providing high-quality instruction throughout this pandemic. This approach has and continues to benefit all members of our school district community during a complex and ever-evolving global pandemic. And again, I want to thank our amazing teachers and administrators and staff for the outstanding job that they continue to do amidst a myriad and plethora of obstacles that continue to plague us during this pandemic. We certainly could not do this without them and it has been a full team effort. As stated by Governor Lamont at the February seventh press conference, the plan is contingent upon the General Assembly voting to extend through legislation his existing executive order that enables the Public Health Commissioner with the ability of implementing mask requirements in certain settings. At this time, we are awaiting more information from the Department of Public Health as well as any action anticipated to be taken by the Connecticut General Assembly related to this issue. If approved by the Assembly, the authority related to mask requirement will fall upon the Commissioners of DPH and CSTE. And if it is not approved, the mask mandate will end. So this is an evolving situation, I know the House took this up today in Hartford and I, just my understanding that the Senate will be taking it up on Monday. And so we all, once we have all of the information, I will be communicating next steps. I'm going to turn it over to Ms., does anybody have any questions for me? Chris?
Um, can, could you clarify, please? If the governor doesn't turn, or if the legislature doesn't give the Department of Public Health the authority to issue mask mandates, would that mean that local Boards of Education would not have the ability to mandate masks in local schools or would it be up to the local boards?
Great question, it will be up to local Boards of Education at that point if, if we are not, you know, given a mandate and marching orders. Unless, right, the Commissioner of Public Health gives an order that we have to continue to do it. If the powers are given to the Health Commissioner as they have been under this current situation, we would still be mandated to do that. Otherwise, if that does not happen, then a local Board of Education, if a local Board does not take it up, then it becomes, you know, moot and the mandate is eliminated or the Board can take it up and take a vote as to whether or not to keep masks.
What is, what is, what Bolton schools, I'm sorry, just a question, what is Bolton, what are you guys thinking along those lines? Are you for keeping the masks on or are you just waiting on the public health to kind of guide you in that regard?
Yeah, at this point, we're waiting for public health, I mean, they have been the guide all the way through and so we are waiting for continued guidance. It is my understanding that, you know, there may be some changes in how the metrics are viewed by the Commissioner of Public Health and that may in fact dictate where we go from here.
So even though the state governor really releases a mandate, you still have to go by the public health?
If the order or the legislation is that the Commissioner of Public Health will make the determination, then we have to follow that.
Right, so that's my, that was my question, Commissioner of Public Health really is a beyond and off for Bolton, Bolton School is not the governor, right?
It's hard to answer that because I don't know what the legislature is going to do here. I don't know if they're going to continue the mandate until the twenty-eighth of February, I don't know if they are going to vote to not do that, at which point the governor's executive orders end, I believe at midnight on February fifteenth, at which time the mask mandate would end. And at which time, at that point then, if a local board took it upon themselves to make that decision, it would be up to the Board to do so, or the Board remains silent, the mandate ends and likely it would be parent choice.
Thank you.
Welcome.
So, let me just follow up on this, I guess, because clearly the situation is in flux, we're waiting to see what the legislature will do. But if the legislature doesn't give the Commissioner of Public Health authority to regulate mask usage, then it's going to be up to the individual boards. Should we be thinking that we might need to have a special board meeting ahead of March first? In case, you know, in case that happens?
Yeah, and I think that's up to, for you guys, one hundred percent to decide and quite honestly, it may mean that you need to set two dates. You may need to set a date for Tuesday night, February fifteenth, next Tuesday, because if the legislature does not take action, the mandate will end effective midnight on the fifteenth. So my recommendation would be that you may want to consider and discuss whether or not you want to have a meeting, at least set one for Tuesday night. And if the legislature makes a decision to continue it to February twenty-eighth, you may also want to consider tonight having a backup meeting, I'm trying to look at my calendar here to see, you know, potentially, we could potentially discuss it at our twenty-fourth budget meeting. We could add that as an agenda item for that evening since we already have a meeting planned for that night. So my recommendation would be to potentially schedule a special meeting for Tuesday night in the event that they don't continue the governor's powers for you guys to then decide as a board how you want to move forward. But that's up to you, because if you don't have a meeting and you're silent on it, which some boards are doing and some are not, right, then it would become parent choice at that point.
Why don't we make a hand if everybody doesn't mind for two seconds, like raise your hand if you want to stay silent on this matter? Okay, good, so it looks like we need a meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I don't envision a scenario where next Tuesday, all of a sudden, everyone is thrown into the walls. I really doubt that that's going to happen, although from a safety standpoint, maybe it's good to schedule something. We do already have a meeting for two weeks from tonight, which is four days prior to one. The next date that we're thinking about is so, I guess we could set a meeting for Tuesday as long as everyone's in favor of that. And then we would just cancel it as long as it's not a relevant date.
Good idea.
Can everybody hear me, okay, my internet connection is?
You may want to turn your picture off and see if that improves it.
So can I, I can just call a meeting, can I, or do we need a motion?
No, you can call a meeting.
I can just call a meeting, can I, rather than?
Yes.
We, I mean, we don't need a mode? Yeah, okay.
You don't, and you have consensus anyways from the board.
Everyone's stand by, but I said, I really don't envision that we would. Okay. All right, are we done with this topic? For today, for the moment?
But he hasn't, so, yep, okay. BCS, Mr. G R, turning it over to you, sir, for an up, quick update.
Good evening. So kindergarten registration is now open, in the past, we used to have run kindergarten registration just during the month of March. But similar to the idea Miss Safran had with the lawn signs, we're like, we need to expand this, so we've opened kindergarten registration at the beginning of February and there's really no closing day, it's from now all the way through the summer. And by extending the window of time, it helps us to know how many incoming kindergarteners to expect and to better plan for class sizes and other pieces for next year, so all positives. Upcoming events, Random Acts of Kindness Day is on February seventeenth and we're going to be celebrating it the National Day. Mrs. Safran is going to kick off the day talking about kindness in the morning announcements and then the students are going to have opportunities throughout the day to put those in place. Read Across America Week is March first through the fourth and is, which is always a fun week, the students love it. And we have a theme for each day and Mrs. Safran has been working with the PBIS Committee and some of the themes as of now are reading, hats off to reading hat day, oh, the places you'll go shirt day, guess who dresses a book character day and cuddle up with a book pajama day. So more information is going to be sent out to parents very soon on that. Parent teacher conferences are coming up on March seventeenth and eighteenth and we're looking forward to virtual conferences again. The sixth or eighth graders are in the home stretch of preparing for student-led conferences and this is the first year we're going to be able to see it through to actually happening, which is very exciting. More scheduling information is going to be sent out to parents about that next week. And Sback and NGSS testing, the schedule has been solidified and the testing is going to begin on April twenty-fifth for Sback testing and May twenty-fourth will be the day of NGSS testing. So the students and staff have been working very hard and I know, as always, the students will do their best on the assessments. That's it for me.
Any questions for Daryl? All right, hearing none, Mr. Muselli?
Uh, thank you, Mrs. Hector, last night, our grade nine school counselor, Amy Destinay and I presented our grade nine information to parents at the Horders Porter School in Columbia. The presentation had been postponed twice, as I'd mentioned to the board earlier. So we were really happy to finally have a chance to speak with families, there were approximately twelve families in attendance. Uh, and we were informed this afternoon that Columbia faculty will be telling those eighth grade families they need to make their final decision about their school enrollment in approximately two weeks. I spent my time emphasizing our new grade nine transition support program, citing specific examples of that new structure. I also handed out little business cards with important emails, social media links and links to our brand new website that Ms. Redner and I have created to share information specific to grade eight families. The website includes a recreation of the presentation from last night for folks who weren't there or for any of our center school families who would like to check in and you can see that at boltonhigh.com/Team26.
Thank you, any questions for Mr. Muselli? All right, seeing none, thank you, Joe. On to my presentation of the Superintendent's recommended budget. Go to the next slide if we could, please. So the budget that I have prepared in collaboration with administrators and our teachers is focused on our twenty twenty-five strategic plan. It focuses on our mission statement to inspire all students to grow as learners, individuals and citizens and really empowers our vision statement to embrace learning and a healthy mindset for all our students to continually build knowledge, develop skills and become, become engaged global citizens. These are the belief statements that the Board of Ed solidified as part of this strategic plan and talks about the components that you believe are essential for quality education that I believe that this budget supports one hundred percent. This budget is a roadmap for our future. The priorities include maintaining Bolton Public Schools as a high-performing school district, focusing on our four strategic plan goals of student success, a caring culture, talent development and resource stewardship. The proposed budget is a two point nine four percent increase and you can see that we have two percent of the budget is focused on regular instruction increase, two percent increase in student support services, or the piece of the pie, rather, for administration and business, it's five percent of the budget, operations is seven percent, salaries is sixty-five percent and benefits is nineteen percent of the budget. There's a dollar increase of four hundred and thirty-seven dollars and seventy, seven hundred fifty-two dollars over this year's budget. This is a clear indicator of the distribution of the increase and you can see that the largest driver is the salaries. So those are the people that we employ that provide our outstanding education to the students in Bolton. It also encompasses the benefits for our staff. We have a reduction in special education of eighty-four thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars. Again, I want to give kudos to Beth Goldsneider for the outstanding job she does as Director of HR and Student Support Services. Admin and business support is up sixty thousand, eight hundred and thirteen dollars, regular instruction, three thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars and operation and services, twenty-five thousand, two hundred and seventy-six dollars. I also want to give a shout out to Sarah Melonowski, our Director of Instruction and Technology and to Joe Muselli, the principal at the high school and Daryl G R, the principal at Bolton Center School. They did an outstanding job, meeting with the teacher leaders, teacher leaders did an outstanding job, meeting with their teams of teachers to really call out and determine what the needs are for our programs for next year. And we started at zero and went from there. We have projected revenues, two hundred and six thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars in federal grants, three hundred and fifty-two thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars in state grants for total projected grant awards of five hundred and fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars. I want to remind the Board that we use choice monies to pay tuition for Bolton students who attend state magnet and agricultural schools and we're projecting that amount to be one hundred thousand, nine hundred and forty-six dollars for next year. Our capital proposals that we have put forward to the Board of Selectmen includes an upgrade of the BCS fire alarm system for three hundred and sixty-five thousand. These you already approved at a previous meeting. Door lock replacement for twenty-six thousand. That number is likely going to change, we got information from the town that that number will be much less because we already have monies that have been set aside in previous capital budgets for this project. So John is working on getting a a solid quote to see if that's something that we can get done potentially during April vacation and determine if we are able to remove this in total from our capital project list request. Storage building at Bolton High School in the Kappa meeting, we put it in for three bays, it was requested that we go back and look at making it larger, so John is working on getting a quote for that to bring back to our next Kappa meeting. And blinds replacement at both BCS and BHS, which I don't think is going to go anywhere and we're going to have to at some point come up with the monies to take care of that in our own budget based on what was said at the Kappa meeting. We have additional proposals that are potential referendum items that I've included here just because I don't want anyone to lose sight of these needs. We are up for a roof replacement at Bolton Center School. The air handlers are part of that, we have had an evaluation done to look at the potential for the cost for air conditioning, all of the classrooms at Bolton Center School as part of the roof replacement because that's the time to do it. We also need to, would need to replace the current air conditioning units that provide AC to places like the office, the nurse's office and the library and such. Soccer field at Bolton High School, science lab upgraded Bolton Center School, a library remodel at Bolton Center School and removal of the greenhouse at Bolton Center School because it leaks, it's not efficient and it creates problems all the time. This is a look at our three-year enrollment, so actuals for twenty twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two and projected enrollment for twenty-two, twenty-three and you see that we've got a slight steady incline in enrollment at the elementary level. Really just almost a leveling out at the middle level and we had a decline and a little uptick, we've already seen it just in the last Really just almost a leveling out at the middle level, and we had a decline and a little uptick. We've already seen it just in the last month at Bolton High School. Columbia enrollment, we are projecting four students for grade nine and a total of twenty-two altogether. And on the side there, I've provided for you the enrollment numbers currently at Horace Porter School. So you can see that their numbers are much lower than they have been in previous years. The Columbia tuition next year for Columbia will be thirteen thousand, three hundred and thirty-six dollars and sixty-six cents. You can also see how that is broken out. Twenty percent of what comes in for Columbia students goes towards the general fund, and eighty percent goes to paying off the Bolton High School bond with a projected total of two hundred and ninety-three thousand, four hundred and six dollars for next year. Again, I want to just call to everyone's attention the accomplishments for this year with regards to teaching, learning, technology advancements, all focused on access, student success, and talent development. We continue to provide quality learning experiences for all learners through this ongoing pandemic. We have continued with embedded P D on assessment practices to address individual student needs, and that's been more important than ever during this pandemic. We've had a reallocation of resources this year to create a steam coach at Bolton Center School, so we're very excited about that. We are in the process of installing the sound field system and the updating of a student computer lab at Bolton Center School. We continue to advance our BPS technology plan, which I think is a great thing that the board has put, you know, a lot of support behind, which we greatly appreciate. We've updated the tech ed and the music labs. We're in the process of doing that right now at Bolton High School, as well as the teacher computers at Bolton Center School. And we have updated all teacher Chromebooks this year. This budget focuses on high-quality teaching and learning, online services that support access for all students. We have a shared service partnership with Eastcon, which includes our food service director and multi-service technology support. As I shared with the board previously, we are talking to Eastcon right now about potentially completely taking over our food service program. Our, the board's attorney is in the process of reviewing a proposed contract for that service. And what would happen at that point is the board, we would use up remaining fund balance in the food service account to pay for that contract until such time as we run out of those funds, at which point in time the board would then have to absorb the cost for that. And quite frankly, the cost is maybe fifteen hundred dollars more than we're paying right now currently just for the food service director piece. So this piece would be to take over the whole program. The cafeteria staff would be employees of Eastcon, and we would just simply pay a flat yearly fee. So that is something that we're looking at very seriously that I, because as I have shared with the board before, each year we sort of are on the edge of whether or not we're going to continue to be a self-sustaining program. We have a shared service partnership with the town of Bolton for Director of Facilities and the Technology Specialist. And as the board is keenly aware, we are not part of the Connecticut Partnership Plan for Health Insurance. This plan seeks to implement our twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-five strategic plan, focusing on responding to post-pandemic schooling, guiding the work of teaching and learning, and maintaining Bolton Public Schools as a high-performing school district, building systems of integrated student support during and hopefully after COVID, integrating transferable skills at all grade levels, supporting teacher leadership and curriculum development, and providing job-embedded professional learning. And the tagline for the Bolton Public Schools, which this budget totally focuses on, is to empower, build, develop, and become. Just a reminder of our next meeting will be very shortly on the other Zoom invite for the budget workshop, and then we have another one on February twenty-fourth, if the board does not approve the budget this evening. And then the budget is due to the Board of Finance no later than March fifteenth, but ideally, we get it to them by the end of February because we are scheduled to present to the Board of Finance on March seventeenth. So I want to be able to give them plenty of time to be able to review the budget materials. And that concludes my presentation for this evening. I believe we're on to unfinished business.
Yes, or well, not my agenda. Unfinished business. We don't seem to have any of that. So
Correct.
On to new business resignations.
So I'd like to inform the board that paraprofessional Deirdre Smith has resigned from Bolton Center School. I would like to thank her for her services, and we wish her well. We have a couple of retirements to announce this evening. I would like to share with the board that our Director of Curriculum and Technology, Sarah Melonowski, has announced her retirement effective June thirtieth. And we are going to miss her terribly, and I have spent most of my thirty-year career with Sarah on and off. So I feel like my right arm is being cut off, and we wish her well in her retirement. And I was notified today. Beth and I were that Leann Manning, Beth's administrative assistant, will be also retiring at the end of this school year. So I'd like to thank them both for their service, and I wish them much health and happiness in their retirement.
Thank you for your service. Let's turn, will be different. Onto BHS graduation date.
Yes, I'd like to share with the board that the current last day of school. That the current last day of school is June fourteenth. And by statute, the board can set the graduation meeting for that date tonight, since that is the last day of school. However, I would like to share with the board that currently there is a bill pending regarding five days of flexibility for districts who had to close due to staffing shortages or COVID outbreaks, which does not pertain to us at this point in time. I'm not going to wood. But that bill also includes three COVID flexibility days for any district. This has the potential to allow districts to not have to make up snow days up to three at the end of the year. So more information on this will be forthcoming if that actually happens. So what I would like to recommend the board to do is to vote to set the graduation date to be Tuesday, June fourteenth, with the caveat that if this legislation is passed in the very near future, that the graduation date will become Friday, June tenth, because I know that our seniors would much prefer to have graduation on a Friday night than on a Tuesday night. And do the motion that way to give that caveat should that change happen. I know that Mr. Maselli was going to be reaching out to the parents who are running senior happenings the evening of graduation so that they would be able to try to solidify both dates till we could nail down which date it's going to be. Correct, Mr. Maselli?
That is absolutely correct. I have kept them updated as we move through. The Project Graduation Group is the group we're referring to.
Yeah, thank you. So be looking for a motion if I could, please.
I'll make a motion to set the graduation date as June fourteenth. Pending any changes. I'm sorry, was it from state legislature or?
Yeah, so with the caveat that if the state legislature.
Okay, so graduation to be June fourteenth unless the state legislature allows for snow days to be forgiven, I guess, in which case it would be the prior Friday, June tenth.
Thank you, Chris.
Second.
Thank you, Chris and Ben. Does anyone have any questions or comments about the graduation date? Not hearing any. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Or standing? Okay, they can plan. The ever-popular future business. Do we have any future business? Yes, not. Okay. Now I am looking for a motion to go into executive session for a discussion regarding the terms of employment, wages, and benefits for unaffiliated employees for twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three, and to invite the superintendent.
I would like to make a motion to go into executive session for the previously stated purpose.
A second. My second.
Any questions? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you to anyone who showed up and will be going into executive session for a short time. Coming out of executive session, adjourning, and then going to our budget meeting to order. Here we are again. Now we will discuss the budget.
Okay, all right, so.
So are we going to be doing screen, right?
Correct, yes, we are. So Mr. Maselli is going to pull up the budget, and we are going to go through it page by page. As board members are aware, I provided you with my recommended budget along with Q and A's that went along with the budget itself. We have a projected budget for grants to go over with you this evening, recommendation for open choice seats, new and enhanced stipend requests. And we are about to start, so I don't know how big we can make this, but.
That Q and A cheater that you gave us was very helpful. Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm glad it was helpful. All right, so we're going to go program by program, Mr. Maselli. So we're going to go ahead and start on page eleven. Here we go, instructional technology. So this budget is is down a bit. And as you can see, you know, we had decrease in annual subscription costs for Google, and the hardware decrease meets our anticipated needs for technology next year based on our technology replacement plan cycle. Any questions on instructional technology? Okay. Art. The decrease in instructional supplies line has to do with some supplies not needing to be ordered since students use fewer supplies last year. So we had some have some leftover still. And there's a small decrease in the periodicals line because the teacher is currently not going to be using this resource at Bolton Center School. And then at the high school, there was a decrease in online services because with the return to in-person learning, some subscriptions are no longer needed. And the increase in instructional supplies has to do with this fluctuating annually based on the needs of classes at the high school. Any questions about art? Okay. Onto English Language Arts. I don't know if you want me to go over all the Q and A, or if you want to ask any questions, or if you want to let me know that you're good with this page based on the Q and A. How would you like to proceed?
I don't think you need to read the Q and A to explain it. That was the point of you having to do that before.
Okay, thanks. And I'll post the Q and A with the budget itself.
Actually, the point is really to just silence me and Chris, you know.
No, that's not true.
Honestly, this Q and A has developed nicely over the years to the point where I think it's almost unnecessarily redundant where you say the, you know, we need some surprise supplies this year, and we don't need them next year, you know, it's like.
Still have some questions, though.
Good.
Maybe maybe we should just go page by page and just have us ask our questions.
That's good. All right. So any questions on English Language Arts? All right, hearing none? I'll go on. World Languages. Any questions there? Chris?
So the program description seems to suggest that French will again be offered at the middle school. Is that correct?
Well, in a perfect little world, I would like to say yes. We, the, one of the language teachers, the current duly-certified teacher is retiring at the end of this year. So we will be posting for a duly-certified person in both French and Spanish. And I'll say that I I'm going to stay optimistic that we can find someone who's duly-certified and is the right fit for Bolton. If not, we will only be offering Spanish because we will then probably only have someone that's certified in Spanish. So had to plan for, in the event that we can, we'd like to.
Okay.
Great question. Anybody else? Okay, moving on to computer instruction. Any questions here? Chris?
So the description states that for BHS, the ten thousand dollars that's budgeted is for virtual high school and Penn Foster fees. It's been budgeted at ten thousand for several years now. It's a rather suspiciously round number. My understanding of these programs is that, you know, they're used as they are needed. So if a student needs to take a virtual course and then they enroll it, do we pay a straight subscription fee that costs ten thousand dollars, or is it per course? I mean, are we actually spending out the full ten thousand dollars each year for this item?
Mr. Maselli?
Yes, that's actually a really good question. So there's, there's, the answer is no, no, yes, yes, right? So you've got two different programs going on there, right? So you've got virtual high school, which is a subscription for X number of seats. That number hasn't increased because we've actually decreased the numbers of seats as our enrollment's gone down. So for a certain amount of certain fee, we get X number of seats, and we make use of those. It is also true that virtual high school doesn't bill us until, I think it was, maybe Kasal will correct me, December or something like. We didn't even know the number. So it's always a guess. The balance of that, we hold for, to your other point, the as-needed seats, the Penn Foster would be, hey, oh, this student needs this as a credit recovery, which is kind of a different model than a virtual high school or a last-minute thing. So that's why we've just kind of kept that at ten thousand, because both of those numbers kind of jump up and down a little bit each year.
Okay. Do you have any data on how much of that ten thousand dollars is actually getting used year in and year out? I mean, are we coming pretty close, or is it potentially a spot where we could find some savings?
Yeah, so so the way the virtual high school works is we kind of buy into it, which is the bulk of that ten thousand dollars. And we have to provide a teacher to keep that number down. Otherwise, that number would be a lot double-ish of that. It's a really nice partnership. Quite frankly, this year, we did not have, because of a resignation and a change in staffing, we actually didn't have a virtual high school teacher this year to contribute. So we offered far fewer seats this year. We were really short seats. We would like to offer more because we didn't ask for additional funds in that line. We kind of managed it internally. The goal is to have a teacher, a teaching period available to donate to virtual high school next year to get us back up to the twenty seats for that. And then there's a small piece of that ten thousand, again, for that credit recovery type of piece. Yeah.
Okay, and I take it that you track the number of seats that we purchase each year, and how many of those actually get used?
We we do. Ms. Goldsneider actually does a great job. The other Ms. Goldsneider, that not the one here's here, does, Kelly does a great job with that. We, as part of the program that we subscribe to, where we offer a teacher for to teach, you know, around the world or around the country, we get twenty seats. So whether we use two, which we wouldn't, or we use twenty, doesn't matter, right? We're paying for that. We have reduced that line and. We have reduced that line and stopped paying for, when I first got here, when you you'll remember, right? Our enrollment at the high school was much higher. We were also purchasing additional seats. But the subscription is a 20-seat piece, so do we use them all? No, but that's, I mean, that's where we're at, right? That's how the subscription works.
Right, but okay, so it sounds like there's not not an option to go to a lower subscription level.
No, no.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Great question, thank you. Anybody else here? Okay, on to math. Any questions here? Chris?
So the Q and A implies that the online professional group memberships are no longer needed. Um, yet the budget still includes $50 uh, on BHS. So is that for a, some other type of dues and fees or is it in there as a mistake?
No, that is for the National Council of Teachers of Mathematics membership.
Which is not an online one?
Correct, it's it's something that teachers, you know, depending on teacher interest, have have participated in over the years as opposed to the ones we had last year, which were some additional online ones.
I see, I see, okay. And um, can you explain what uh, Kuta is? K-U-T-A?
Yes, uh, so Kuta is specialized software uh, for math teachers to generate um, activities, assessments for students. So it was something that they tried out several years ago and all the teachers have adopted it because it just, it's an opportunity to create a huge bank of of problems for kids to solve. It's it's been the most effective uh, software they found.
Okay, thank you.
Do not ask me the origin of the name, I have no idea.
Okay. Moving on, science. Any questions here? Chris?
Sorry, I told you I had questions.
We like the questions, it's all good.
Um, so I noticed that the uh, cost for the chemical disposal uh, is going up. Um, it's a pretty big jump, a 25% increase, uh, so it just made me wonder. Is this something that you go out to bid for? Have you looked at other possible providers of this service?
Yeah, another great question. Um, we don't, there's kind of the service provider that kinda does this thing. Um, what we've actually found is the last couple of years, we were underfunded. Uh, and at the end of the year, Ms. Carvalho was transferring funds from other things to cover it. And we realized that it's really gonna kinda be at that level. So when we built the building, we had a huge disposal, right? Like stuff that had been laying around and then we didn't have a lot of buildup, so we've kind of flattened it out and Ms. Carvallo's kinda figured the the spot where we're at the last few years. And again, we were underfunded the last few years and now the goal is to now fund that line appropriately.
Sounds good, thank you. Um, and then the Q and A uh, addresses an increase in line 58100 dues and fees for BHS. However, the budget proposal shows no such increase, so I'm wondering, is the Q and A wrong? Is there something missing from the budget?
Maybe the Q and A is wrong.
I mean, that's the better option, I think, that the Q and A is wrong than something left out of the budget, but just wanted to.
That would be the Envirothon, um, and it may have been my mistake in the Q and A thinking that we hadn't done Envirothon the last couple of years and we were adding it back in, but it may have already kinda carried it in through the budget. So that might have been my mistake in the Q and A.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anybody else? Okay, on to, I think it's health, MPE. Any questions here? All right, seeing none, on to social studies. Any questions here? All right, seeing none, vocational education. All right, seeing none, business education. All right, seeing none, family and consumer science.
How is the stove holding out? Or the oven?
So, at BCS, so far so good.
It wasn't, wasn't, wasn't the uh, oven at the high school in need of, possibly in need of repair at some point?
No, it's.
Am I confusing with the center school?
Yeah, it's the center school replacing the huge Vulcan.
That's it, okay.
Yep, that we have on, that was in a um, an approved um, package a number of years ago. You know, we had it in there as items that could also be used with that bond funding that we received. Um, and that thing's still going strong, so we're gonna just let it keep going.
And sorry, yeah, that's not in, obviously not in this.
Yeah, but great question. They just don't make it like that anymore, so John and I are fearful to replace it until we have to. Cause then, you know, we'll be placing it every three to five years, so that that, you know, we're gonna hang on as long as we can. All right, music? Chris?
Okay, so the the Q and A uh, indicates that the drop in line 56110, which is instructional supplies for BCS was due to purchasing a trombone, trumpets and reeds this year. So I, you know, I'm not questioning that those purchases were made. We approved the transfer for the trombone or the Barry Sacks this evening. Actually, that wasn't even listed there. But my, I guess my question is if we've, well, the increase or rather, the decrease is only $277. So clearly we did not uh, buy a trombone, trumpets and reeds for $277. So what I'm wondering is, why isn't this budget line actually lower if we were able to purchase all of these new instruments this year rather than having to have them on next year's budget?
So you're on instructional supplies, correct?
Correct.
So these numbers would have been much higher if we had needed to purchase the instruments. This is sort of like the going rate right now of what Sarah, you wanna say something? Nice. Go ahead.
Um, I I also want to remind um, everyone, there has is also a tremendous increase in music, music cost. So that leveling off, and I didn't know if you had gotten to that point yet, Kristen. Um, so while Kristen was talking about so many things, but there's also that huge increase. Uh, I know that Mr. Muselli and Mr. G R and I were all surprised when that came forward.
So this is just about keeping us moving forward with being able to get the music and supplies that we need without buying the big instrument purchases that are part of our general purchases. The the increase in goods costs has been astronomical.
Right, but it sounds like from the Q and A, and and maybe I read the Q and A wrong, but it sounds like the from the Q and A that some of those instructional supplies were actually instruments, not music for instruments, or is it just the Q and A worded?
I think the Q and A is worded probably incorrectly because we were probably originally wording it off of when we had those pieces in last year and we bought some instruments last year, right? Ahead of the instrument replacement cycle to have them in the hands of kids because we needed them. So I think it's just that the question and answer is worded not well.
Okay, okay, so I mean, I, where I was heading with this was that and you know, it might be something to think about before this gets presented to the Board of Finance.
Yeah.
Is that, you know, clearly, well, the the Q and A makes it seem like, you know, the the decrease was because we were able to purchase instruments this year, but clearly you're not purchasing instruments for $277. So that might lead someone to think, well, okay, so they had savings out of next year's budget, but then they found other things to add into the budget that, you know, they they found things that they could spend the money on in other areas rather than simply reducing more.
And you're, you're spot on, Chris, because last year we also purchased some instruments in advance similar to this year, and I listed those as just as examples of some things that we bought that we can use now. But it wasn't to be of an exact match of those items with the amount, so it was worded, um, not clearly, but.
Okay.
So we'll fix it, to your point, and we're gonna fix that other question too. I'm making notes for myself along the way here of things that we need to fix before we put this out there, so this is helpful, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then one other question about music. The Q and A also notes that there's an increase in field trips for BHS, but the budget proposal doesn't include a field trips line. So I was wondering what I was missing there, or does the increase show up somewhere else in the budget?
Casal? Did I lose her?
I think um, it's it it gets transportation.
It's in the transportation.
We start with departments, but it moves to Casal's magic transportation line. So that's the field trip fee is to get the kids to the competition that we hope will will happen next year.
Okay, so maybe move that from that section of the Q and A to another section.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're still on music, right?
We are, yeah. Do you have questions?
I had a question, but not till later regarding the field trip, so I'll 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 wait my turn to get to that.
Okay, all right, thanks, Diane. Anything else on music? Okay, thank you, moving on to tech ed.
Mrs. Hack, just once, I just wanna check, is Mr. Broniel here?
He is.
Okay, I just got a notice that he just joined the other meeting, so I thought maybe he fell off and ended up in the wrong place, so I just wanna make sure he was here before you continue.
I don't think so. Oh, you know what, when I went to log on to this one, I think I clicked on the other one first. Oh, this, I'm the only person here, this must be the wrong one.
Thank you. So, all right, tech ed, questions here? All right, hearing none, continuing education. Questions here? Okay, hearing none, library media.
I have a question. Um, I guess I'm just wondering, if for next school year, are we expecting online services to really increase?
So New Zealand was something that we had previously purchased in Title I, Diana, great question. Um, we need to move it out of Title I and move it into the Library Media Center budget. So that accounts for an increase there and we are anticipating an increased cost in subscriptions, most assuredly.
Now, I know earlier on we discussed, um, you know, how um, enrollment is has been, uh, I guess you saw a decrease. And I don't remember if it was Bolton High School and Bolton Center equally or one was more. So how do you take into account, like I know year over year, things are costing more, but how do you equate that, right? Like, how do you get the organic growth based on what you're seeing your numbers, right? So you might have had like a great enrollment year, but now you're seeing a decline. So how do you adjust your budgets accordingly and what is your projected enrollment for 2022 and 2023?
So the projected enrollments would be at the last page of your budget book.
Okay.
Independent staff on page 59, but I believe Mr. G R can speak to the other part of your question.
Great.
Our enrollment's staying steady, actually increasing recently. And the other part is, the teachers do their budgets, the academic leaders, each year they call the companies and they get quotes and estimates. Okay, that's it's probably gonna go up 15%, so they they get that information um, to be able to accurately build their budget.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, the the other piece of online stuff is it's not, some of them are billed like per nose, right? You got 12, it's it's, but some are like, oh, it's for the whole building or it's for the district, so a tick up in enrollment up down even by a couple of dozen students wouldn't change the subscription fee.
Right, and the other thing too that I also wanna share, cause it's a great question, is just looking at the Board of Ed packet for this month, in October, when we have to report uh, for various reasons, student enrollment, right? We were at 312 kids in pre-K to five. We're now, as of February 1st, we're at 316. We've already had inquiries for additional kids to enroll just in the last couple of days, pre-K to five. Uh, in middle school, we were at 182 back in October, we're at 183 now, again, additional inquiries about enrolling. At the high school, we were at 249 in October, we're already up to 254 with additional inquiries about how to enroll. So we're seeing an uptick in enrollment right now, just in in the middle of the year, just since October.
So you take that as that projection and you're like, okay, is that where you base your increase in cost depending on what category?
Well, yeah, and it really depends, like, for example, like Joe said, like, certain um, online programs are based on, you know, a between this many students and this many students, you pay X. If your enrollment is then between, say, 1,000 and 2,000, it's Y. If it's between 2,000 and 3,000, it's Z and so forth and so on. Sarah?
Um, and and another piece with the library and media, what we did learn with COVID is that um, there were some online subscriptions that just were used by specific departments. And over COVID, we learned, everybody loves those, and so when everybody participates it in it, it goes into the library and media budget. So that's where you see another, that's why there's another shift in that increase because the Library Media Center has picked up uh, manning, basically manning that budget, um, that subscription for for that, if that makes some sense.
I'll just add that what we do do um, is not so much, you know, enrollment in the school, but the the usage. So what um, we're always tracking is, you know, if three teachers are using it, it costs this much, but if we expand it to a fourth teacher, it's actually less expensive to buy it for the whole school and shift it to the library. So you'll see over years that doesn't, we shift things back and forth based on the subscription package that meets the annual usage of of folks, so that's, that is something that we do track.
Thank you. Any other questions for library media? Okay, hearing none, athletics?
I know that Bolton High School obviously is a bigger school, you know, more athletics uh, programs, but it's a huge, obviously a huge difference in every category, but then when you look at online services again, it's the same. Do you guys just have like a universal program for both schools and you're just piggybacking off of that? I'm just curious how that was like the exact dollar, but everything else is very different.
Joe?
Yeah, yeah, exactly what we just spoke about, so that is for impact testing. So for, no matter how many athletes, it's 400 bucks for each school for however many athletes for the year, yeah.
You're figuring it out, cool, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for athletics? Okay, seeing none. That concludes regular ed. Now we're going to move into student support services. Questions here? Chris?
Oh, this is kind of a question, well, it's a question about the legal services line and it's so I completely understand what the need for a $6,000 increase, I mean, it, yeah, it makes sense that we're gonna see that. But I also noticed that our that the $6,000 accounts for the total increase in our legal services budget district-wide. So I was a little curious about that because I know we've been doing negotiations off the books to try to save on legal fees.
So this is only for legal fees for special education only. You will see a legal fees line when we get to my budget.
Oh, I I understand that, but my point is, there's no decrease uh, in legal fees elsewhere, we're staying static, so I was just wondering and and maybe I should ask that when we get to your budget, is why we haven't seen a a decrease, so yeah, I'll just hold the question.
Okay. Thank you, we'll get to it.
Yeah.
Questions about special ed? Okay, hearing none, extended school year. Any questions here? Okay, seeing none, tutorial and homebound instruction?
Actually, can we go back to? Actually, can we go back to extensive school year?
Sure.
Now, there's a fairly significant drop here. Assume that's largely because of COVID winning, and we're not going to need as much next year.
It's simply based on students' IEP needs.
Okay, so the extended school year doesn't cover the the programs.
Special COVID, correct, correct. We always offer E S Y in the summer for students with special needs whose IEPs determine through a P P T that that is what the services that they need to meet their needs.
Okay, so it has nothing to do with helping kids catch up from any deficits related to COVID.
Correct, right. Like, so that program, to your point that we ran last summer, we were able to run with S R dollars that we received from the federal government.
Thank you.
Tutorial and homebound? Social work? Okay, seeing none, guidance? Seeing none. Nursing and medical? Chris? Yeah, go ahead, Rhea.
Okay, I just, for some reason, okay, I did have a question. So in social work, it just seems like we don't have many social workers, right? Because there's hardly any money spent.
Beth, you want to speak to that?
Is that because?
We just, yeah, we have, and I apologize, I don't know why my video keeps shutting off. Well, we have one social worker this year. We changed from a family marriage therapist from last year to a social worker for this year. But they're they're not using a lot of instructional supplies. They use the curriculums that we have in place already. Social skills curriculum. And so there's not a tremendous need for for supplies for them. Is that was that your question, Rhea? I'm sorry.
Yeah. Yeah, it just seemed like, oh, wait a minute, oh, yeah. It seemed like such a low number.
Yeah, they don't really use a lot of them. They use things in the classrooms.
Beth, can you do me a favor? Beth, turn off your, yeah, there you go, and now talk, please.
So, yeah, so they're they're not using a lot of instructional supplies. They're using like the curriculums that we already have for social skills, and they're using things that are in the classrooms. So there's not a great need for instructional supplies at this point. And we were without a person for a while last year. When the budget was done this year, our social worker was brand new and didn't anticipate many needs. So I think that's the reason for.
Thank you.
And then, did you already get to speech and language before I finally got my, or getting?
No, no, we didn't get to it yet. So I think we're good with guidance, if I'm correct, and we're on to nursing and medical. Any questions there, Chris?
So I was surprised to read that the defibrillators have expiration dates. So I went online to figure out why that was, and it's because the batteries, you know, well, they run off of batteries and the batteries have a have a lifespan. So my question is, are we replacing the entire A E D? Or have you looked at whether the battery itself can be replaced possibly for less than the cost?
The one that we're replacing, yeah, Chris, the one we're replacing, we can't get batteries for because it's so old. It was an original, I think it was here when Kristen and I arrived.
Correct.
Oh, my goodness.
So we've replaced them, and they do expire, actually, because you can't get parts for them. So that is why we're looking at a whole replacement for that one. It's a very, very integrated.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Yeah.
Great question. Thanks. All right, anybody else? All right, psychological services?
Yes, I have a question. You know, I don't know, I know that when I read the goal and all that, it sounds like this is very geared towards, you know, just wondering with mental health and everything, is there is there a reason we're going down as far as budget, especially for the teenage group in my in my high school? Man, not by a lot, but I'm just curious where that came from, that we're spending a little bit less next year.
In instructional supplies, you mean, Diana?
Yeah, professional, yeah, right, professional meetings and instructional supplies has zero, yes.
Yeah, we had a slight increase, right, professional meetings, and then a decrease in instructional supplies. Beth, you want to speak to that?
Sure, so instructional supplies, again, we use things that are in place in the school, so we have curriculums and things that we're using. So the psychologists do more with groups and where they're they're working with kids and talking with kids, and especially at the high school level, and not using a lot of supplies and materials. So I think that that's the reason. And also, we were down a psychologist until last, this week, actually, at the high school. So that person was not in place to do a budget for budget requests. So typically, in the past, I would say in the past several years, we really have not used a lot of instructional supplies, because the things that we're doing are more working with teachers and working with kids on the social emotional learning kinds of things. But it doesn't take like things, if you will, like, it doesn't take materials or supplies. It's it's skill based and working on, you know, anxiety and things like that with the kids.
So the professional meetings, that's the time of a psychologist that you're, is that what? No, those are just.
Professional meetings is professional meetings is when the psychologist, but again, the fees are so much lower now because so many things are now there's not, they don't have to go out of district to participate in professional development or their own meetings. So a lot of the things are now online via Zoom or via Google. So the costs are much lower than they were a number of years ago.
So maybe I'm missing something, and maybe is this it? Is this is this the budget for mental health for for the schools?
So, no, so also, right, part of the mental health budget comes in the salaries of the people that we employ, right? This is simply about potential supplies that they may need to do their jobs. And so the professional meetings part is the professional development component for them to go out to participate in out of district professional development that maybe, you know, might help them for various things to support students. The instructional supplies, you know, Beth already spoke to that, and the tests are actual testing elements that are used to test students as part of either a P P T referral or part of an annual or triennial review.
I understand. So basically, this is about budget, not to get off topic, but I'm curious, when do we get to Board of Ed to understand what what that what that program looks like as far as the psychology aspect and mental health for the students?
So we've had a number of presentations, unfortunately, I think it was prior to you joining the board about social emotional learning and all of the pieces that we do for students. But that certainly is something that we could put on an agenda for March or April to provide an update to the board.
I'd be interested to learn what you guys are doing.
Absolutely. We'd be happy to do that.
That's a good idea, especially considering the challenges and the changes in the last couple of years.
At an all time high, so definitely.
Yep.
Especially considering possible changes to mask mandates and how students are receiving those changes too.
Yep, absolutely.
Preparing for that too, which is around the corner, so.
All right. Anything else for psychological services? Okay, hearing none, speech and language? Rhea, I think you had something for speech and language.
No, I was just looking, but it just, it seemed like it went up a lot percentage wise, but you had bought one, I, you know, you bought some tests and it.
Yeah.
Looked as.
Yeah, one test, yeah, one test makes a huge difference.
I know. Okay. I figured.
I think we didn't have any tests last year, though, Rhea. I think we didn't have to buy anything last year.
Right, right, yeah.
Okay, we're on to program improvement and evaluation. So you know, this is a conversation we have every year, right, about professional development and our attempt to have the board fully fund that. And here we are, trying to get it fully funded.
So just a comment, if I may. It is a rather alarming increase for the in-service portion, particularly at B C S. But I did go back and look through some of our budgets a few years ago, and it might be worthwhile pointing out in the Q and A, just for the benefit of the Board of Finance members, that we're really, the the B C S in-service dollar figure is now, it's basically gone back to pre-COVID levels, if you will. And that might be worthwhile pointing out.
Agreed. I'm writing it as you're saying it. Thank you.
Yeah, that's a great point. It's more of a return to normalcy, where last year or the year before, we saw a large decrease.
100%. Anything else here? Okay. On to central administration. So I'm going to tackle the legal services right here, Chris, okay? Okay, so we would we have already used, so perfect example, right? Yes, we did off the record negotiations. But normally, the board, with the exception of teacher negotiations, conducts negotiations without the attorney. However, we receive the materials from the attorney. So that that cost is always there, that cost does not go away for us, right? So there's that piece. There also is an increased cost in legal fees that we have experienced that are COVID related. The board is aware of a federal suit that was filed that we have had to pay thousands of dollars to represent the board, because every board in Connecticut and New York and other places in the country were named in this suit. The suit still is not done. So I think that we would be short sighted at this point to reduce that line based on what we are currently experiencing.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation. I did have a couple other questions about central admin. Can you talk about what we get from frontline for $9,000 each year? What actually do they do? And is the price based on the size of the district? Do we have other options? Frontline, I guess, is the substitute services?
Sarah?
It's our, no, so frontline is our it's the H R as far as the enrollment, I mean, as far as our, what's it called? It's called Apple Trax. It runs that. Also, it is also our substitute service, like tracking those pieces. So it has combined services. Is there anything else to solve? Because I know the services have changed, they've bought out different ones.
I E P Direct 504.
I E P Direct, yeah.
504.
Yep.
Yep. So it's a host of services that it provides. So Apple Track is our H R platform. So when someone applies for a job in the Bolton Public Schools, it goes through Apple Track, and that's how we receive all of the applications electronically through this system.
So Apple Track is part of frontline?
It is now, yes.
I believe A S O P is too, which is which is one for personnel.
Correct.
To call in for their absences and other pieces like that. So it's a variety of different pieces that it provides services for for us.
Okay, so is from the Q and A, it looks like some of the chart, some of the costs like Apple Track is included under is it included under? I guess what I'm, what I get to get is is the $8,842 that's in the line for substitute services. Is that related only to substitute services? Or is that covering Apple Track?
That's just the substitute services.
That's just one part of
Correct.
services that, okay. So what actually is involved? I mean, what are we getting for nearly $9,000? Is that, are they just calling people to see if they can come in to be a substitute?
It's a platform that we use that houses the substitutes. They can go on and they can view the open jobs and then select the jobs. The teachers can also go on there and post information for the subs. It's also the platform that we use currently to request time off, absences, sick, vacation, personal, all that, that goes through this platform.
But presumably, those additional services you mentioned are not.
They're not part of this. This is just pure A S O P, pure substitute absence management system.
Okay, and are there other alternate? I mean, is this something that we we bid out and you compare to? It just seems like $9,000 is quite a lot of money for calling, you know, to setting up, for setting up as a substitute service.
Well, so it's both ends, though, right? It's our end, when teacher X has a sick day, they call into A S O P and they put in the system that they're sick. Then it gets noted in our H R system, counted against their sick days. And then it gets noted that that a sub is needed. So pre-COVID, right? All districts in the area, with the exception of Manchester, were using A S O P. So substitutes could go into one platform to put in their information to note that they wanted to be a sub, and then they could apply to the different districts through this one system. So it tried to streamline the substitute process. Manchester, at the time, was using Kelly Services, but you know, I don't know what's happened since COVID, right? And and I think that's something that we had talked about at one point, about going to something like that. But the cost for us was like 30, $35 more per day, per sub, if you recall, to do that. So this is a far more cost effective way, especially being also that it's part of a regional type system to try to garner substitutes as well as manage on the H R side of it on our end.
Right, okay, I guess so if, because you are trying to attract good substitutes and
Correct.
So if you had a some sort of custom system of your own.
Correct.
It would make it harder for them to find, okay, that that that's that makes sense. My other question, do you happen to know offhand what services we're getting from CAE these days?
So they host our online policies. So that is a major service that we receive from CAE. They still provide information to board members, and they provide online trainings, you know, if board members want to take advantage of that. But the large portion of that has to do with our online policies.
And is that? I'm trying to remember. Sorry, I don't have the exact dollar amount that we are sending to CAE. I can't find it offhand, but.
Cassal can find that for you.
Yeah, it's it's about 5,000.
Okay, so I mean, we have our own website. Is it not possible that we could have somebody figure out how to?
Not right now.
Sorry, 4,000.
I mean, because we could maybe pay somebody $4,000 or $5,000 to come up with a system that would allow us to have our policies on our own website and then save that expense year on year.
We could do that. I mean, if the board wants to do away with CAE services altogether, we can certainly reduce the budget by that, whatever that total amount is that we're paying for CAE services. Then I got to figure out, you know, how we do that.
Yeah, I believe that part of it is a smaller part. The $4,000, that's. The $4,000, that's for like the overall membership dues.
Okay.
So it, it's smaller than the, the policy piece.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm not sure that I'm at the point where I would propose we cut this out of the budget. But I just want to, you know, make sure that we are getting value for this service and not spending thousands of dollars each year for something that we could maybe do in-house.
So I can have, because Saul will break out, she'll find, she'll get together what the CAPE costs are and send that to me. And I will send it off to all of you so you can see, you know, each element of the CAPE services that we pay for and how much it is. And then you guys can make a decision from there on how you want to take care of that, you know, what you want to do with that.
Thank you.
Any other questions about central administration? Okay, hearing none. School insurance? Chris?
How often do we go out to bid for or get quotes on our property and general liability insurance?
Because all?
Right now, we're in with the town and we're using Karma. So we have not gone out to bid, but Karma is the one that represents most of Connecticut.
Okay, so the idea there being that they are going to negotiate the best possible rates because it's, they're representing a huge consortium.
And we also have a broker with Town USI who also will help us when we're taking a look at, at this policy as well as for cyber and stuff. So they haven't made any recommendations to say, hey, you know, leave Karma because they're not the best bang for your buck. We haven't heard that come through yet.
Thank you for explaining that.
Correct. They also will help us, you know, same thing with the data breach. They're the ones that will go out there and get the best pricing to fit our needs every year.
Thank you. Any other questions on, on school insurance? Okay, seeing none. Building administration. Chris?
So the cost to graduation is going up by $500. The Q and A, I think all it says is that graduation, cost of graduation is going up. It doesn't really explain why it's getting more expensive. Could you shed any light?
Yeah, so the big expenses in there are, you know, the photographer to get the pictures of every child because they don't pay for those. We provide the image. The flowers, we don't, are crazy prices. We do, as you, you've been to graduations, we do that, and the caps and gowns. So those are all. And, and you know, the, the class itself, the students, the families contribute to some of that. And we're trying to, from an equity lens, really trying to, to work on those numbers and carry more of the burden in the budget than have that fall on families. So I've, that's, that's the rationale for the increase.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We're going to improve that Q and A too. Got that, Mr. Russell? All right, moving on. Fiscal services. All right, seeing none, systems management.
Do you feel that with the increase we've made in contracted services from Crac and East Con, that we are now at a level to adequately support our technology needs? I mean, I know we're already having a fairly big increase here, but is that going to get us to where we need to be? Or are we still going to be short?
I'm not sure, to be honest with you. We are increasing from this year. You know, we started with the number of days this year. I think it was 100 days, if I'm not mistaken, Sarah, right? And we're bumping it up to 100. Sarah, can you hear me? 2040?
Yeah, 100, I wanted to say about 35, another, like almost another month out of it.
So, you know, I can't tell you that that's really going to fully meet our needs. I don't think we're going to know until next year, once we evaluate it at this point in time. I'm, I'm hopeful that it's going to better meet our needs than it does this year. I'll tell you that.
Do you have a sense of? Trying to figure out how to word this because I don't want to, you know, disparage people who provide these services. But how much of it is, you know, things that might be fairly routine, like upgrading, updating operating systems? And how much of it is troubleshooting when teachers and students have issues? I mean, is, is there a way?
There's two pieces here. Crac is the backend piece, if you will, right? It's our servers, it's our upgrades, it's putting in a new lab, it's those pieces, right? The East Con piece is the day-to-day, this isn't working, this is broken. How do I, how do I, you know, why are these four Chromebooks not working? Kids need to get on them. It's the day-to-day operations, if you will. Did I say that correctly, Sarah?
Yes, you did.
So we had
And, and there's that networking of, of, with all of our online services too. And we actually both, I mean, it's mostly with Crac, but then some of the maintenance also has helped out with East Con. So it, it's, yeah.
It's a lot.
A one-to-one district is, you know, we're, we're a one-to-one district. And we have thousands of devices now when you talk about how many people are accessing the, the, our wireless services, if you think about all the different devices within the classroom, from the desktop to the smartboard to teacher Chromebooks, to student Chromebooks, to, it, it's, we're it's, it's a lot.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else for systems management, anybody? Okay, onto contracted salaries and wages. I'm sorry, Chris?
No, that's okay. I have several questions in this area. So the increase for administrators is, as a percentage increase is quite a bit higher than the percentage increase for teachers and admin assistants. I'm wondering if part of that is because some of the administrator contracts have been rewritten so that the mileage is no longer a separate thing, but is now part of salaries? Does that account for part of the increase here?
It does, yes.
Okay, I'd wondered that. And then could you explain how exactly the stipends increase? Part of the Q and A, I think, indicated that the co-curricular and athletic stipends are increasing in part because of contractually required increases. And I apologize, I can't remember from the last teacher contract. Yeah, so if you could talk to that.
Yeah, so, um, maybe we should go to stipends right now, so you guys can take a look at that right now. So, thank you, Joe, right on top of that. I appreciate that. So if we could make that bigger though, Joe, because it's really small. Okay, so can we make it a wee bit bigger? Thank you. So each year, the stipend committee meets and it consists of members of the teachers' union, teachers and administrators. And what happens is staff brings forward, um, hey, I did chess club for the last year gratis, which is usually how we get a new club added. Somebody starts something, they do it for a year without getting paid. It, you know, takes off, let's say it takes off, right? And so then the next year they come back and they say, you know, it's really this number of hours, it's this number of days, this many kids, whatever the case may be. And if the stipend committee determines that it's something that, you know, we should keep going and that, you know, it's good for kids and all of those pieces, then they assign a point value to it based on the time factor, how often it's offered. Am I saying this all correct, Jen? I'm watching her nod her head, yes, right? How am I doing? Okay, did I forget anything in that part so far, Joe or Jen? Joe?
Number of, number of kids being supervised is the other, the other piece of the puzzle.
Right, and then the number of students. So there were some requests that were already denied by the stipend committee that don't even make it to me because the stipend committee denied it for various reasons. So the enhancements that you see before you are for the capstone coordinator to go up two points. For the music band K-12 director to go up three points. And I'll just start, I'll go kind of one at a time. So capstone coordinator, there's a lot more to it now. Joe, you want to speak to capstone and why there's more to it?
Right, so from an instructional standpoint, we have shifted the start of capstone to the junior year. So that means that those capstone advisors are now working with two grades of children as opposed to one. So that's why the stipend committee moved that enhancement forward.
Okay, you want to then speak to the music band, please?
So I can actually, if you look at the music band CTE, Health and World Language, those leaders were only receiving one point more than a leader who only worked in one of our buildings. And we thought that the, the extra meetings, the extra work to cover two buildings was worth a four-point differential than a single, as opposed to the one point. So that's why they, we approved, the stipend committee approved, the three-point bump for each of the leaders who work in both buildings. It was, it was a matter of equity for those. Should I keep going?
Yes, please.
Yeah, so then the, the, the coaching pieces that you see there, most of them fall into the category of trying to be competitive. Right, so we try to attract and retain coaches. We charged Mr. Hummerson with researching both like NCCC, but really focusing a little more on the geography, right? So it doesn't matter if you're each grand B and you're in NCCC, it's so far away, it's, it's not really a valid argument. So he looked at the, kind of the surrounding areas and what they were being paid. A real anecdotal example, and I won't give you a name, is we have a, one of our, our faculty members here who's an outstanding coach and doesn't coach here, keeps coaching where they have coached for years because the money is almost double. Right, so, and, and I get that faculty member likes to tease me about that almost daily during the winter season. So we, we're, we, the stipend committee approved these enhancements of two points or one point to try to close that gap, to be competitive, to attract and retain quality coaches. The only exception to that explanation is we had gotten up to, you know how successful our cross-country and our, and our track programs have been? And, and I'm measuring success in number of kids. So our winter piece has really taken off and we're looking for a third adult, so a second assistant to supervise the winter and kind of match the model that we're using in the fall for cross-country and in the spring. So that's coaches.
Joe, can you give me sharing capability, can I share right now? And can you stop so I can share the comparison so they can see what we're talking about here? Can you guys see that? Okay? So you can see. Although I don't know why the difference isn't showing up here.
Just widen, widen that column, Kristen. That's why it's giving you pounds, just widen column H. We're not hiding glassy numbers.
Yes, no, we're not. Um, so you can see, you know, with the exception of one district, we're way, there's quite a discrepancy in what we are paying our coaches. And so this is an attempt to get us to be more competitive because we want our teams to be competitive and we want to have coaches to coach our teams.
To be fair, most of the schools listed on here are not schools that we would be competing against.
Exactly, right, so, and that was, and maybe I wasn't clear. So instead of looking, we usually compare to NCCC, right? But for this, if we're trying to attract employees, it's more of a geographical attraction because for a few thousand dollars, a coach isn't going to travel an hour, you know, five minutes or whatever. So that's why for this, we looked more of the geographic representation, not the NCCC relationship.
And that's not totally an apples-to-oranges comparison either because we used to play in the Charter Road Conference with Ram and Talan.
Right.
Right.
And we do play against Vernon.
Right.
Okay, so I just, I wanted you to be able to see that for, for point of reference for, you know, this is the pool we're drawing from. And that's why we selected surrounding communities. Continue?
Okay, so the chess club really fits into exactly what Kristen was describing. Here's a club that's been running three years, the numbers of kids have grown and grown. It was maintained virtually through the, through the pandemic. So the stipend committee felt it was appropriate to now, for the first time, offer a stipend to that particular coach. And then the testing coordinator for the NGSS, so, you know, SAT, PSAT is managed through guidance. But when we look at our AP testing program, we have had a stipend for that, a substantial stipend for many years because there is so much work involved with that. The NGSS, that's, so that's the science testing piece, has become more intense. There's a lot of coordination to computer and training and all those kinds of out-of-school things for that coordinator. And that's why the stipend committee approved one point for that coordinator.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you for this very thorough explanation. It definitely helps me have a better sense of why we're seeing such large increases in this area. Because I was definitely concerned. It was the one area of the budget that was really giving me pause. You know, because I, and I went back and looked through all the budget books that I have just to kind of see. And, you know, athletic stipends, they've increased 50% in the past nine years. And yet, the teacher salary line has only increased 17% over that same period. But our student population is 10% lower than it was nine years ago. So I, I'm just having a little bit of trouble understanding why we are spending so much more money on stipends when we have fewer students. When teacher salaries aren't going up at the same rate. And I, you know, I don't, I wouldn't dispute that, that any of these extracurricular activities are great opportunities for our kids. But I guess what I'm wondering is, can you provide the board with, you know, some sort of data to support that we are actually seeing increased numbers of kids participating in the various clubs? And that, I know we've heard that the, you know, the number of kids going out for indoor track has been increasing, but I don't know that we've seen hard numbers to back up the claim that we need a third or a second assistant coach. I would certainly feel better supporting this ask if I had some of that data that I could, you know, that I could use to justify these, these increases. Is that something that you can get to us?
Joe?
Yes, so actually, you know, as we're looking at, at the additional coach, it really is in that one area. So it's, we can definitely get you those numbers. That's, I was actually a little taken aback when, when I found out how big the numbers were, right? So that definitely, remember that it always is going to creep up a little bit because there is an association with the teacher's contract. So maybe this, some for, for some of our newer board members, just to, so everybody's on the same page, right? There's going to be an annual increase associated with the teacher's contract, which is why the stipend committee talks points, not dollars. Okay? So we can also, you know, we can show you the, I mean, the list of club, we don't really track numbers of kids in clubs. The numbers of clubs, there have been more over the years, Ms. Davie, absolutely, because we've shown that there's, you know, people are doing it. But at the same time, there's clubs that we no longer fund, right? So there's a couple that just, it's not, haven't been happening, either lack of student interest, lack of teacher interest. And so we're not, you know, so there's that savings, which is And so we're not, you know, so there's that savings, which isn't necessarily reflected in the percentage increase in the budget, but is a financial saving. So is there any area other than the, the track piece, which is the new coaches over the last couple of years that were asked, that you're, that data you're asking for, that, and you probably want a copy of that spreadsheet on the, the coaches comparisons? Are those the two data points you're looking for?
Well, I mean, given your answer, it actually raises some concerns for me. I, you know, if we are seeing regular increases for, for these stipends, but you're not tracking the number of students who are participating, then how do you know whether, whether we need to continue the stipend at all?
Yeah, no, that's, that's a fair question. So Daryl and I both sign off, right? So we know, I may not know how many kids are in chess club, but I know chess club is meeting and there's six or eight kids in there, right? Just anecdotally. If, if chess club isn't meeting, we're not, we're not approving that stipend because we actually appoint people every year. Right? So Beth is the chess club person because I know she did it last year. I know she's got kids doing it this year. If that, if that's no longer happening, we're not appointing a person for that stipend position. And that is actually reviewed annually. So that's how, that's how there's the, the checks and balances of who's getting paid.
Daryl?
And to add to that, Chris, the teachers who do these clubs and stipends, they fill out a form. If they're, if they're looking for an increase or an enhancement and they have to have a rationale, it's like, it was 12 kids, it's now 18 kids. I used to do five hours a month and now I'm doing eight hours a month. They provide us a full breakdown before we meet as a stipend committee so we can make a true judgment. We deny quite a few because we're like, yeah.
Yeah, we're tough.
I have more hours, but it's truly less kids or a portion of it during the day. You know what I mean? Like, we look at all angles of, of the form that they fill out.
Sue?
I have a question. You've both mentioned several times a stipend committee. I know with our contract, the stipends are all negotiated with the teacher's salaries. Who is the stipend committee?
Good question. So per the teacher's contract, the stipend committee is, consists of the athletic director, who's the, the chair, the two principals, and then representation of the teachers in both buildings. And that group gets together typically once a year, but sometimes if something comes up, we'll meet, we'll meet additionally. But we typically meet once a year and review the requests for enhancements, so more points or for something new. And we've, we say no a lot because what we do is for a new stipend, or even for an enhancement, we ask the, the applicants to say, well, how does that compare to something else that's, that's going on? So if we're going to assign a point value, we kind of want to make the comparison to those, those factors that Kristen was talking about. You know, how many kids, how frequently, and what's the time commitment?
I think one thing though, we could get for you right now, right? Is a list of all of the clubs that we offer, how many kids are in them or projected to be in them? Because that might be something that's offered in the spring and not now. Certainly could get you the data on the increase for indoor track for sure. And to your point, we will start tracking it yearly. Both Daryl and Joe are going to create spreadsheets and they're going to start with this year. And it really isn't necessarily fair to compare this year to last year or the year before, to be quite honest, right? But moving forward, we'll be able to provide you that data. Daryl and Joe, correct?
Absolutely. Yeah, it's not, it's not a problem. We know ahead of time, it's, it's, it's easy to collect as we go along. Sure.
Perfect. That would be greatly appreciated and it would certainly help to make the case for, but you know, I keep going back to this discrepancy between how much our stipends have increased over the last nine years compared to our teacher salaries. And, which is why I started with, my initial question was, you know, how much of the increase is, is from the contracts? Because if the contracts over the last nine years have, have only resulted in, what did I say? A 17% increase? How is it that our stipends have increased 50%? At the same time, our student body has decreased 10%? It just, it just doesn't make sense to me.
Well, we have added stipends over the years. We certainly have done that over the course of the last decade for sure, 100%, right? Indoor track being a perfect example, right? Adding things, kids come and say they have an interest, people start it, they do it for a year. Robotics is another perfect example, right? We started with robotics at the high school, then we also added robotics at center school, right? And we added, you know, we've got Envirothon and we've got the, we had history day for, you know, you know what I mean? Like, we've had a variety of different things added over the years because we've had student interest demonstrate that that's something, you know, that kids wanted to participate in. So we have had ads and certainly I can go back through the last few years. I don't know how far back I can go, but to put together sort of a spreadsheet, if you will, or some information about the ads that have happened, right? So you can see what the interests are. I think that that would be helpful for you to see. We'll see how far back, how many years back I can go. I'll do my best to go as far back as I can.
But also, that would also help justify the increase. I mean, yes, if we're having 10 more clubs than we did 10 years ago, then that, right there could explain, you know, that could be, depending on how many points the stipend is worth, could be $40,000, $50,000. So, okay.
The other thing you'll see, just again, total transparency, when we provide you that spreadsheet, you will see cheering coach, right? For example, zero students for the last several years. However, I'm not going to recommend that we cut that from next year's budget because what if there is a group of students and an adult who step up and want to do that? So although that won't really be an expense, it's sometimes a budgeted item because interest in clubs waxes and wanes year to year. So that's like, just another moving part that I just wanted to kind of explain to everybody that won't, won't be trans, it won't be readily understood when you just look at a spreadsheet. But that's the reality of, of some of these activities.
That raises a good point. I'm sorry, I cut someone off.
I was just going to say, I do still wonder why this isn't negotiated with the teacher's contracts? Because I know in, in many districts that is the case, the stipends are all negotiated.
Yeah, the point values are.
Okay.
Yep. The point values are, are part of that, that's part of the contract. That's why as a stipend subcommittee, we only talk about points, we don't talk about, about dollars, right?
Okay. So maybe it's fair to assume that 17% of the 50 or so percent increase in the stipends can be attributed to the contracts and the remaining 33% is
More clubs.
New clubs, okay.
Yep.
All right.
All right. So let me review what we're going to provide, right? I'm going to send you the sheet, the comparison for athletics. Hang on, I'm writing notes to myself. I'm going to give you the added stipended positions as far back as I can go within my tenure here. Okay? And Daryl and Joe are going to provide me with a list of clubs and athletics and the number of students involved or projected number of students involved in each for this year. And moving forward, they're going to track that each year. So next year, they'll be able to provide you this year and next year's information when you see this.
Thank you.
Okay? All right. Other things here?
So I'll ask the question I ask every year, or at least the last couple of years, that this is budgeting for a full complement of teachers and all staff positions being filled, whether they're filled now or not, correct?
100%, yes. Thank you for the question. And I'm hoping that we're fully
Full complement of the courses and and
Programs.
Programs that are currently offered, not in a, not beyond that or expansion beyond that at this point. Because we can't fill what we currently offer.
Correct, correct. This budget supports current programs and projection of fully staffed for next year. Thank you, Scott. Okay. I'm going to move on then, seeing no other questions, personnel benefits. Questions here? Okay, seeing none. Going to move on to operations and maintenance. Questions here?
So this is like the repairs and maintenance budget. This is John's budget, buildings and grounds.
Yes.
So over the last couple of years, we've made an awful lot of transfers during the course of the years to supplement the maintenance budgets for things. And so that seems to be a trend that's predictable. And yet the increase is only $1,300.
Well, so, but we also, we have a large increase in purchased property services. And that's, you know, a lot of our fees for a lot of the operators that fix things for us or that maintain various items for us, right? And that is an area where we've had to transfer money into over the last few years for sure. So hence the large, you know, increase there. You know, the repairs and maintenance piece, that piece, a lot of that has to do with stuff that we can do in-house where we can just go get a part and the guys can fix it, right?
All right.
Right?
So the, the two are together then.
Right. And then
In those transfers.
Yep, yep. And then, you know, you see a, a large increase too in our operations and maintenance supplies because that's another area where we have been transferring money.
Okay. So the
If I can add to that?
Yes, please.
Okay. So the purchase services that originalize, those are the ones that are contractual and they're recurring. So we, those we have a relatively, you know, good handle on. The second line, repairs and maintenance, those are the unpredictable, no clue. You know, this breaks, we got to call someone in. So those are, that's your unexpected. And the bulk of this year's transfers have been into that line where, you know, HVAC system is down, electrical needs repair, the light pole needs repair, this needs repair, that needs repair. It's stuff that we had, we didn't know. So that's what that line kind of represents. And the supply line, a lot of that has also increased. That's actually the line that, um, if we need to buy parts and can do it ourselves, that goes into the supply line. The first two lines are all purchase services. We just break it out just to kind of be able to show you, you know, this first line is one that we can best guess. The second line, we have no idea.
The second line and the, the third, the supply.
And the supply.
Those are more tied together. Things break and we got to go find parts to people to fix it. Okay. So that's, looking at it together, then the, you know, it's a bit, still a healthy, it's a healthy number, but we certainly didn't hit it the last couple of years.
When you're preparing, I'm sorry, Scott.
Yeah. Scott.
When you're preparing this budget, do you look back at previous year's budgets and see how much we've had to transfer in? I mean, it seems like if you took an average of the last five years of what has actually been spent in this area, couldn't you take an average, you know, and, and use that as a basis going forward?
A lot has changed because we're repairing and we're trying to maintain a lot more now. So not really.
But wouldn't that at least be a, a, a base, a base level?
Right now, we've used the last two years as, as, as a base. And some of the stuff that has become more standard, we've moved it up into that we know line, out of the, we don't know line. So every year it gets looked at.
So, you know, with the change of, of sharing John with the town, that's why we've taken the last two years that John has been with us to, to use that data based on where we stand now with John as our facility director and that information.
And presumably, maybe we're catching up on deferred maintenance.
Correct.
So there's, there's that
In the high school hitting that age where things are starting to, to fail, frankly.
Yeah.
Okay. So sorry to be contrary, but I'm, I'm just looking back at earlier budgets and so we're proposing $33,900 for this coming fiscal year. That's $5,500 less than we budgeted in FY 2018. So it seems like we used to spend more in this area.
Well, but you have to remember though, that we were also, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, no, go ahead, go ahead.
Call to your, for your consideration, right? We had, we had fixed lights. So we had the, the, we had to pay that piece off, right? So that piece, we paid off now. Kasal, you want to speak to that?
That, the, the lighting piece, that's part of the electricity.
Right. But so you'll see, right, in electricity, we have savings this year.
Because the loan is no longer there.
My, my point is
Did I just understand? Sorry.
Yeah. Is, is it, five years ago, we were budgeting more for repairs and maintenance than we are budgeting now? And yet we're, the last two years have been transferring all kinds of funds into this line, line item. So it seems like if, if we were looking at, you know, maybe a longer historical window, it, it might give a a better, a longer historical window of what we've actually spent, not just budgeted. That, that might be a bit more useful than just looking back two years.
So is that something you want?
We can, we can take a look and grab some of that info. Because some of the repairs, they're going to kind of be one-offs and, and stuff, which is what that line represents. But we can try to go back and see what we can
Well, I would make, we compare all the, the three numbers we've been talking about. We make sure to compare all three of those. If you said we've increased, potentially have increased the purchase services to cover some of that. I just, you know, make sure it's, if we're going to do this, it's the whole picture. But, I mean, I, I can understand the two-year because it's a different approach to maintenance from what we had prior to that. And we'd have to look, you know, if we got much further back, how much money was returned from that and not spent. Budgeted. So I'm, I'm comfortable with the two years because it's a consistent approach to the maintenance. Okay? But I, it would be, you know, if it's possible to see what was actual spent versus what these budgets are. And I understand that, you know, you start a new budget every year, which is the proper way to do it, not just. But in some of these where we, we have had all these transfers, it helped, it'll help explain them moving forward. You know, like, that's always kind of the concern is, why didn't you budget for this properly? So and biggest answer is, you don't know it's going to break, but.
Correct. That's why some of that line in the past, you know, we, this is enough to cover it and
Right. And I, yeah, I get that. It's got to be a conservative budget, but I'm also concerned that we don't have now that surplus in the electrical budget that we had before and, you know.
Right.
That we don't necessarily have one of those sources to, to, to take from.
All right. So I will have Kasal and John put together actuals versus budgeted for those pieces for the last two years. And I will get that off to you as well.
Okay.
To the board. Okay.
So I have a question on a different topic or similar, whatever. The electricity number, which the Q and A, you know, the decrease of 14.5 or approximately, says us to pay off the lighting upgrade, which I'm glad to hear we're done with. That was from a few years ago, whatever. Electricity this year, we have had a couple of large, pretty significant transfers out of electricity. Are we projecting that electricity is going to be going up next? Are we projecting that electricity is going to be going up next year? Budgeting conservatively? I'm just wondering what the, what the basis for that number is.
So we're, we're hoping that it'll come in around, let me see, what did I say it was going to be?
Or estimated at
At 18 cents.
At eight, yep, 18 cents with 1.3 million kilowatt hours.
Correct. It's conservative. Hopefully, the two numbers will balance itself out between the rate and the usage. Because sometimes, you know, if the rates come in a little higher, but then our usage is a little bit less, that's what's kind of been going on. It's kind of been, you know, one up, one down, one up, one down. So we've been kind of okay with having some savings there. In this next budget, I think we should be okay. I mean, our contract is locked in. The only side that we don't know is the delivery side, the ever source side. So we know half the number. Will we have to save potentially? Depends on the, the, the temperature, depends on what the, the weather and the usage ends up being.
But the bulk of this reduction is a one-time reduction because we're, we're not paying, paying for the lighting project.
Correct.
And the rest is just the regular gamble of what it's going to cost and how much we're going to use.
100%.
Okay.
It, it's, it's a little bit of a crap shoot.
Yeah, I guess I was not clear on how much is known versus how much is unknown. Thank you for providing more clarification.
Yeah.
It, it seems like the investments you've made in energy efficiency must have paid off because back in FY 15, we budgeted $236,000 for electricity and we're at 237 now, so.
That was one of the main drivers of why we did those projects, because I knew that there would be cost savings involved in that, in, you know, in the long run.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, anything else in this category? All right, on to transportation.
I had a question about the gasoline. I think it, yeah, it says the estimate is 248 or something around there. For gas, how reliable is that estimate? Because gas, you know, the gas station is at least a dollar higher right now. Is this a realistic projection?
Our prices are typically, don't typically line up with what you're seeing um, outside of this contract.
Right.
They, they don't really run one for one. I mean, because you're looking now and it's $3 and something. Well, we, we've never paid $3 something. You know, it's a dollar something, it's $2 something. So these estimates, it's what the vendor is currently projecting for us. Granted, that could be changing as we speak. I mean, you know, we, maybe it's different this week if we have to ask now than, you know, a month and a half ago, but the market is just, we're going to be chasing it.
Do we lock in a rate for a whole?
The decision, usually we lock in gas, we typically lock in calendar year. And usually, you know, CROG is the consortium for the, the towns. We usually have them and they do auction, reverse auction, they go out to bid for the group. This year, we've decided, or will decide that the prices are in such flux that it doesn't make sense to lock in.
Right at this time.
Correct, right at this time. So we're looking for, if it happens to be, hey, we think we should lock in now, at that point, I believe, you know, is when the town will set, will lock in and then we'll have a better pricing. But right now, the consensus is it's not going to be to our advantage to lock in because it's high. We think it's high.
You think that 242 is high or that it's higher currently than 242 and you hope it will drop?
No, we think it's going to drop from what we're, we, we hope. There is hope that it will drop from what we are projecting here, but we don't know that, so we're going to project this.
Got it. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's, this is the best guess. I mean, they're the experts. I mean, we, we can't do better than what they say we should probably budget for.
Right, no, I just, I just wanted to understand how, how we arrived at that number. So thank you for the explanation.
You're welcome. Anything else here in transportation? Okay. Moving on to the appendices. So Appendix A, as you know, that's, those are our capital requests. That's what we've requested. Capital's had one meeting. We have another meeting coming. I'm just not sure when. Uh, Appendix B are all of the requests that, that were made and then the cuts that were made by me at my level. And then Appendix C is the estimated education revenues to the town of Bolton. And again, these amounts are based on the governor's proposed budget for the biennial budget. And all of these amounts are subject to change based on actual state funding, enrollment, special education services as required by PPT and IEP. I just want to call everyone's attention to that part there on Appendix C. Appendix D are our projected federal and state grants. And again, these are only an estimate. Actual amounts may vary based on a variety of factors. Appendix E, many board members may recall, we had crafted this in accompaniment with Board of Finance a number of years ago. Kasal and I worked on it a little bit more this year because really, there were pieces that I was struggling to understand. So if I'm struggling to understand it, I'm certain that others are struggling to understand it. So you'll see down at the bottom, you know, we brought the titles down again. We put the total cost of education, less the grants and what the net cost of education is to the town of Bolton. And then the 2.94% increase. And that bottom piece, the federal and state grant revenues, you know, we had been, we thought it was just important to see that and so that's there. And then Appendix F is our enrollment projection for next year, which then brings me to choice enrollment for next year. Which I would like to talk about next. So currently this recommendation is based on some data that I just, that recently, just prior to me providing you this information, I received about the number of students who are interested in certain grades. I will be receiving an update. It is my recommendation that if you could scroll down to the bottom of it, Joe, please. There likely will be additional sibling requests, which we have opened seats up for siblings before in various grades where we could and where it was appropriate. I also think that we should open additional seats based on interest specifically in Bolton, where Bolton is a family's number one or number two choice in grades where we can accommodate these requests. Our choice numbers are down considerably. You know, I think a lot of that has had to do with the pandemic. And I think some of it has had to do with other towns in our geographic location, pulling from the same section of Hartford, who have also come on to open up choice seats as well. So I, I would like to say to you that I'd like to base that decision on the most up-to-date information I have by the time I have to file this, which I believe is the end of February in order for us to qualify for a special bonus if you put in your choice seat application by that date. So I'd like to do it based on the numbers that they're providing to us versus just sort of a shot in the dark. Does that make sense to everybody?
Are you, are you saying that what is on, about that, what you just showed us is likely to increase the numbers?
But yes, I think so, because they are in the process of actively recruiting. They've changed their process, so it's more of an online type piece. So hopefully, that garners more interest. The chef case has been settled. There is a want and desire as a result of the settlement of that case to open up more seats in all districts. It is potential that there may be additional financial incentive. I know that the legislature is going to be taking that up this session for opening up more seats. So I think it behooves us to certainly, you know, look long and hard at that for areas where we can open seats, which potentially could also mean opening seats in ninth grade. And I think it will have to be based on, you know, what we see for interest in coming to school in Bolton. So I'm hopeful that these numbers will be larger than what I'm presenting tonight. This was based on, you know, the latest data that I had when I, when I shared this information with you a couple of weeks ago. And I'm hoping for an update in another 10 days or so. Maybe a little longer. Depends on when they send it to me.
Given where we stand with Columbia students, it seems like a reasonable reasonable thing to do to open up more choice seats, to try to offset some of that.
Agreed. Okay, and then the last thing I have to show you tonight would be the projected budget for grants for next year. So as you can see in our IDEA 611 grant, most of that is in salaries and benefits, a large percentage. The 619 IDEA grant goes to supplies. There's very, you know, strict guidelines that we have to follow for IDEA, so we are following within the guidelines of what we're supposed to be doing there. This is what we're projecting currently for open choice. And you can see the number of FTEs we have in the IDEA 611 and in open choice as well as in the chef grant. The team mentor monies that we get from the state, Title I, same thing, and, and that has very stringent requirements that we have to follow. So we have put it in the categories where we are in compliance with those pieces as well as Title II. Title IV, as you know, in the last several years, we have received a Title IV grant for $10,000. That's really about supplies, new innovative things that we can do. We can't put the same thing in it year after year, so we wait to make sure that we're getting it. And then we look to see what new and innovative things that we can do to improve a program or programs each year. And then the Title III grant is a very small, small amount of money that goes towards supplies. And we have a total of 4.7 FTEs projected in grants for next year. Questions here?
So the, the dollar amounts that are reflected in each of the columns. So, so let's just take the supplies, the $41,795 that we will spend on supplies from our grants. Is that $41,000 accounted for in the various program descriptions, the supply lines and the various program descriptions?
No, what you're seeing in your budget book is just general fund. So this is on top of it.
Okay.
Yep, correct.
The supplements.
Okay. All right. So I want to be, I just want to review what I believe that I am providing to the board prior to our next meeting. The stipends we talked about, Darrell and Joe, with the list of clubs and athletics and number of students involved or projected number in each. The athletic comparison salaries and the actual versus budgeted for operations and maintenance for the last two years. Is there anything else that I did not keep track of that I am providing to you? Or did I get it all?
I just wanted to see what we're doing for, you know, the mental health arena.
Right. We're going to do that in a board presentation, though.
In March?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha.
Okay, all right. All right. Does anybody have any other questions or comments for me for this evening?
Thank you. This is, yet again, really well-prepared budget. The Q and A, I think, was longer and more expensive than ever before.
Sorry.
So, but no, it was great. You answered a lot of, believe it or not, a lot of questions I had.
Well, that's good to know. One of these years, I'm going to try to answer them all, Chris, before I retire. That's my goal. Look at Andrew's face. Anybody else? Any other comments?
How about you can't retire until you answer all the questions?
Okay. All right. All right. So we are on for our next budget meeting on the 24th at 6:30. And we are
The mask where we also discussed the budget.
Correct. And we are potentially on for a meeting on Tuesday night at 6:00 PM. Okay. I want to thank you all very much. Could I ask my team to stay on for just a minute? But board members, good night.
We need a vote.
You do. Yeah, sorry.
Thank you, Kristen.
Thank you.
Move to turn.
Second.